That we were operating under the assumption that it started on the 13th of April, a 14-day notification period. And we didn't know when the 40 days start. I received an email late in the day today from Tom Tetro who indicated that the entire wetlands application has not actually been submitted yet. So I wrote back and I wrote to DPS, the document that we intend to investigate, to invoke our 40-day period. But it is our opinion, subject to guidance, that the 40 days does not begin until the application is actually submitted to DPS.
So have you notified the DPS at all?
Yes, I have. I wrote them and very briefly what I said was, "This is your notice of our intent to investigate, that we are unclear as to when our 40 days runs, and that we are assuming that that period will begin when the completed application, when we are notified by DPS that the completed application is in hand."
So they have, we said if they had started from when you started, they got our letter.
Correct. We have notified them within the 40-day window if that in fact started on the 12th of April.
The 14 days.
Yes, correct, the 14 days.
Great. You can have that in mind.
Thank you.
So we have tasks to do between now and 40 days, 40 days of the day that we proper set in session. And we have a task for tonight, so I want to separate them a little bit because we're taking our first step, I suppose, tonight. The long-term view is that this Conservation Commission ice statute needs to provide comments on the application to the DPS, the program of our own. Tonight, we're going to be identifying the information that we need from EverSource in order to make those comments. So if we can check that off tonight, we'll be good. Okay? But the Conservation Commission input. The second goal is, it might be possible to get input from the public. We've got a lot of smart people in Lancaster, people who know land really well, have other experiences. So, you know, it's an opportunity to get that experience, or get that input. My aim as a pillar is to do this in a staged approach so that the commission members can review the initial set of questions that we've generated. And I'm going to pause for a minute and go over here. Well, the commission members have this list. Any member of the public have that list of questions, Gerald, here on the table? It's a list that was compiled. I did some review. We had some public input at the last meeting. Elektra had a conversation. I've spoken with Rob, Nancy. So we got some good, oh, so we got some good input so far. But we want the commission to review that and then potentially add to that so that we can revise that document and approve it hopefully at our next meeting.
And to supplement what you're saying, Tom Tetro today promised that he would send us the full 700-page application. I was under the impression that we had most of the material, but apparently there is a complete application. And there's some confusion about what's been going on. Apparently, we are just working, according to some people, on mitigation funds problem. But I think the commission sees this as reviewing the wetlands application. So one of the things that we will get out of the 700 pages is perhaps some written answers to things that we've thought of.
Okay. Okay. So that the four-page list that has been circulated looks like a long list. I think we could walk through it point by point. My thinking is that the commission members have had it and have had a chance to review it. I'd rather start with them raising questions, so we'll start with the short application that we have and get those questions from the commission. I'm going to pause. I'm going to ask the members of the public who'd like to comment on the application. I'm going to go back to the commission members. We'll walk through the maps, see if people want to have any input on the maps, and I've got a map over there on the table along with the other documents. How's that sound? I suspect it might not be in our home meeting. I suspect it might be water, so I hope you'll hang in there. Let's get through this, because this is, we need to get moving on this. We want to get moving now.
Rachel, can you comment on what are, what is the ultimate work product?
I can. At least I can share my thoughts. I'm going to take my mask off so that you can hear me and see me better, and please stay over here. That seems to work. So I put together, and this is a very high-level headline for what such comments would look like. Basically, what we're required to do is, kind of, not blocking, review the application and make sure that the wetlands that are represented in the application, all those maps, are correct and we agree with the representation. And if we don't agree, how do we think they're different than what we know is happening on the ground? Do we agree with the functional assessment that Stan Tech did? There's an opportunity to check with some other state agencies, New Hampshire Fish and Game and others who have had some input into this. And this is maybe a core question here. Has the applicant really worked to make sure the most valuable wetlands, they've avoided or minimized the impact to them? And then finally, this is a bigger bucket, but it's an opportunity for us to weigh in. Do we have any other concerns about the application? Are there changes we want to suggest in the name of request? Are there conditions of approval or might we want to recommend not approval? That's, you know, that's part of this set of comments that we've made to DPS. Does that make sense to people? Obviously, a lot simpler for a driveway crossing than for, you know, miles of power line corridor, but it's the same process. Okay? So I want to make sure that everyone has this list of questions that was circulated at the end of last week. The title of it is Network Source D142 Upgrades Application Review. So this is really good for the commission members now, if you've got a chance to look at it. I want to start and ask you first, based on the questions from number 1 through 10 that have been generated in the meetings and conversations so far, what, do you have anything that you'd like to flag for further discussion?
I'll start with one, the prime wetlands question. Is that the correct one? Yes.
Yes, I'd like it.
Prime wetlands are wetlands that have been identified by a scientist as eligible to be voted as prime wetlands by the town. Prime, when a wetland is a prime wetland, there are a little bit more stringent requirements to act on it. In 2004, the Lees Lawson Report recommended that a number of prime wetlands were eligible, including what they call the Page Hill complex, which is where a lot of this power line runs. And so...
Can you repeat what that complex would be called?
In the Page Hill complex.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
I'll take time off, so I'll do it so you can hear. In our latest NRA study, there is a map page that shows our various wetlands. And in 2006, the way studied, there is also, wetlands are enumerated and named. So the advantage of designating the prime wetlands to the town is we have more control under stricter standards, more stringent standards of what can and can't be done. The disadvantage is that it implies some restriction on what we've done in the West, you know, even more or less controlled. And so my thought is that we should examine the idea of having a warrant article and see if the town legislature will designate some of our wetlands prime. That's a question for the town to designate, and so that's something that we can look forward to.
In terms of this question that we would potentially send to EverSource, that is the question we're saying is, the town currently doesn't have any designated prime wetlands, but we're asking them if they saw anything in their functional assessments that might be considered or who would that be?
And we were in possession of two functional assessments that have been done in the past that identify those complexes as being prime wetlands, but not quoting prime wetlands yet.
But, excuse me, how would that impact this particular situation? I mean, the town has not done that.
Correct. So at this stage, it makes no difference in what we do now.
Right. So we just, that, okay.
But it would be something that we would, I would recommend doing for them.
Great. Other, so again, we have 1 through 10 questions based on the seven-page application that we have. Any other questions that people want to discuss more?
One of the questions is about poles. And today, Tom provided me with the list, which I haven't had a chance to send out, of which poles would be prior, which would be different. And so that information is available. I think that relates to question number three.
That's a question about poles being moved to alternate locations. There's, if it's not right, you'll just mention, we do have a question about those poles.
I have a copy of them.
Fantastic. So we're already getting more information. This is great.
Yes, we have copies of all those too, yes.
This is great. Anybody else on the Conservation Commission who wants to flag anything, who wants to chat?
Number six, we do have designations of the areas that they have identified for permanent mitigation. In fact, those would be the four pylons in which the driver base would be built.
Yes.
Northumberland and Whitefield, with whom we're also in conversation, have some questions. Northumberland notes that nothing is designated as having mitigation effects, although they don't agree with that. And the other operative question is, how long is a spanning map in place?
So you're adding a new question.
New question.
Which is totally fine.
Well, that relates to crossings.
Yes. Good. So let's make a note of that, and be a good segue for other members of the committee if there are questions we think we should be asking about the application.
I got the impression that, from looking at the map and then reading this, that spanning streams means that the poles are on either end. And so the wires span the streams, and then there's no necessity for stream crossing. It's just...
Is that what that means?
Well, I actually do the opposite conclusion, that during construction, the way that they handled stream crossings was a spanning structure would be built with the intention of removing it. But I think there's both of them, both of them, Rob.
Yes. So the more I understand, the more people talk about spans, this is typically poles. So span is definitely typically the definition given to that town, but you may well be correct as well.
Yes, the language, yeah. Pardon me, Rachel, you should have the privilege of recognizing speaker.
Well, yeah, I'm not going to crack down too hard for the, but I would like to break for the conversation, but in fact, it seems like we do want to keep that question in. Number four.
Number four.
Yeah.
Any others? I did make a note of the question about maps and that size. So anything else? If this is the point which I would say, okay, now the public has some good lines in here. Looking at that presentation, the application, the seven pages, anything that you think encouraged conservation is missing would be asked.
With respect to question seven, you asked about getting notes from the 310-21 meeting, and I have sent that request in, or Tom, I may have sent it to you, and I think I copied DPS on that as well. So this is, there was a pre-mitigation meeting of some kind referred to in the application. And I didn't know anything about it, but I don't know much.
So, Rachel, are you suggesting that only the, like, number four and so on are ones that we will use? No. We're going to keep all of these, but it's an opportunity for you, more conversation than just getting the document. And add to it. So, and so far, I haven't heard to take any away, but that there is some activity already to be getting answers to these questions, which is fine. I mean, if there's a question or two in here that EverSource gets that they already have the answer to, I don't think it's going to be.
Number 10 is a close-ended question, so I just find a way to say, if blasting occurs, when and where?
It's my impression, actually. Blasting has been mentioned. There's been the Lancaster segment, there are a few rocky outcrops that may require sun blocks.
Good to know.
But that will be, I hope, further disclosed in Tom's 700-page full report.
So that, any members of the public here who are looking at the documents? Okay, we'll circle back for a minute. So I have more questions on page two related to this, the first seven, 11 through 16. Any more discussion on that?
So you're saying we're now proceeding to questions 11 and further?
Yeah, that's still part of the application.
Right. It's my understanding that...
I just have a note from Tom Tetro that says, "Spanning streams relates to constructing the matted access road over the streams with no impacts to the bed or banks of the stream, not related to a wire span."
Tom, can you put that in the chat?
That's how I got it.
Fantastic. Yeah.
I don't know whether you do screen captures of those conversations or whether that will be part of the recording, the page you have about this.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and I'm glad to get this additional input. Our goal is to answer all these questions tonight. Again, I'm happy to get the updates on the room information that's going to be coming in, but our goal is to, and of the, input it to this document that can be sent as a whole piece to EverSource and they can walk through it. If we don't make some of them, we won't.
I might comment that there, one view is that our discussion is not with EverSource, our discussion is with DPS about a permit. So EverSource, as I see it, and Stan Tech, will certainly be the people in the room to direct questions and direct them. But this isn't a direct negotiation between us and EverSource. This is a DPS application that we are being asked to review.
Absolutely.
And that's a little bit why I sort of shied away from entering into too many direct meetings with Stan Tech and DPS until we had a chance to get ourselves wrapped around that.
Well, and that is why I wanted to put this, you know, there are two big chunks here. Our ultimate goal is to communicate with DPS, as you're saying, with our comments about the application. But we are, have the right to, and I think might be outdated, to get as many questions answered from Stan Tech and from the other source so that we can use that to form our opinion and our comments to DPS. Do you want, do you want to say anything?
Yes.
All right. Anything else on questions 11 through 16?
Question 15 addresses potential shovel-ready products, projects, and been contacted by Lori Sumner, who is the DPS person who knows about mitigation and power from the relevant projects. She's offered and asked to meet with us and enlighten us. My response to her was, I thought that next Thursday was a little bit earlier than we wanted to do that, because we wanted to digest this. As the questions that I have, I note that in the, this brief application that we have, shovel-ready means all ready to go at the time of the beginning of construction. And in the timeline that we have in front of us, that would be the start of the construction of the shovel. So you also mentioned that there's a committee forming, and I don't know if you've heard about this, but Shane is very interested in having some shovel-ready projects on the shelf, as are several of us. Shane and I have talked about approaching you then and seeing about getting some sort of study group together so that we can do that. Other questions that we have are that, in this case, we have $7,000 worth of immediately identified unknown impact. But if we had a $50,000 project, would the rules permit us to apply $7,000 of mitigation funds towards the completion of that project? Could we combine them with other funds? So I'm not answering the answer. I'm saying that's the question.
So, yeah, I'm hearing, so that's a question for DPS, not EverSource. And I think it's great that we have the opportunity to talk before the summer about how those mitigation companies work in the best way. I wonder if this question should come right out, it's sort of got nothing to do with DPS and stuff. But it's a question for the Conservation Commission.
Well, are you implying that what we're talking about here is a discussion with DPS? Because I'm feeling that our business is to work with DPS, and there are questions with EverSource. I feel uncomfortable about us entering and being boxed in the direct negotiation with EverSource, because our relationship legally is with DPS.
So that's one of the reasons I think let's take this off. But I'm just going to do this, and I want other members of the commission to weigh in on this. This is the whole commission that needs to think about this. Our ultimate goal is working with DPS or getting our comments to DPS, and we would work with them to apply for mitigation funds ultimately. Tonight, which is creating a set of questions that we will send to EverSource so that we can get those comments to DPS. It seems to me question 15 does not belong, but that is part of DPS' inquiry.
Yes.
So, yeah, good to hear that. But this is, let's be crystal clear about this, this meeting tonight is about creating a set of questions to ask EverSource to give us more information on. And I'm sure that we're with Stan Tech and now this, you know, that's there. There's that up. Okay, members of the public, ready to move on to the maps? Any more? So we have three sets of the full maps of the whole project. There's one behind Lucy on the table there, if anybody wants to look at those. We've identified, you know, through that, you know, compilation of that report, we got questions 17 through 26, or 26 that are specifically related to the maps. And commission members, you know, I put little tabs on the maps that I flagged in here. You may have looked at the maps here at town hall or whatever, so we have more questions. But we'll do the same thing. Are there questions about, do you want to talk about anything on questions 17 to 26? Rob?
Yes, and I'm not trying to dominate the meeting. Please don't assume that, but I have looked into some of it. And the question 17 is, Israel's River a fourth-order stream? Is that the nature of the question?
Oh, we have an updated copy that I sent to you.
It says shoreline permit by notification, Israel's River, fourth order.
Is that what we all have for 17?
No.
Okay.
Here, I can get you a copy.
I think what we have is the one that you and I were looking at, and I...
Perhaps, I know two versions.
That's okay. Yeah, so page two.
So is there a question about whether it's a fourth-order stream?
I think that came out.
Okay.
That's why they're giving shore.
Yeah. Thank you for...
And the answer is that fourth-order stream, fifth-order streams are bigger than fourth-order streams. For example, out by your house, Nancy, Darwin Brook is not a fourth-order stream until it merges with the other brooks just past where you live. Just downstream of the Hasselworth basin is where it becomes a fourth-order brook and it's smaller than that. So that would imply a third order stream, and the Israel's River is definitely a fourth-order or greater stream.
That's why, and we've asked them later in the document for a copy of that application. It's all fodder. So any, again, everybody, Rob has great questions. I think other people have great questions, but make sure we have them. So are there any here, 17 to 25, that you want to talk more about?
Question 17, what are the total temporary wetlands in pass for longer?
You found the answer to that.
Yeah, that's on the cover email of the Stan Tech document.
Can you just give it over and plug it in?
Yeah, it's, yeah, we've got that answer.
And is the answer...
It's a million, like a million four.
Okay, I understood it to be maximum, but it's indeterminate because they won't know until they start laying maps.
Yeah, approximately 1.1 million, excuse me, square feet.
So I have this one, I want to make sure.
We have it. We have an approximate number.
Yeah.
Yeah, so on the Stan Tech document that we received, it says approximately 1,142,860 square feet of temporary wetland matting, 2850 square feet of permanent wetland fill.
The best impact project. So maybe we do want...
Oh. Thank you.
Be good to know.
Thank you. So that, yeah, so that's the...
Well, I want to start a new tradition, which is, maybe everybody knows each other, but I'm not sure I know one here. So my name is Kate Hartnett, and I'd like to, before I ask a question, say hello. My name's Kate.
Okay.
Perhaps the commission should introduce themselves.
We have to do that.
Okay. KJ Lavoy.
Eric Regenstein.
Rob Christie.
Kathy Hawes.
Nancy Southburn.
Rachel. I mean, there's only four more people in the room, why don't we go?
Yeah. Dan Gage is awesome. Tom Banter.
Todd Banter.
Tom Baer, supervisor.
Who's the one reason? Nobody?
I'm sure.
Who's what? Don't care to answer the question?
Excuse me?
I said, who doesn't care to answer the question?
So I'm not sure Troy and Nancy are, do you have...
We're trying to figure out when we are, right? We need to go to question 31. I'm looking at the question 21. Access road by the river line may be a show machine question.
Yes.
And I'm having a...
So those are... So those are, sorry, on that paper, what page is that? And that's a good one because it was important.
Yeah, 43 and 44.
It's more the aerial photo, you can see there's.
Those designation.
No, so we were just, you know, I think that one did come from, just curious about, you know, was that?
And we do have trail, PIS system trail overlay that's available to put on there. The ATV trails, correct me if I'm wrong, are pretty scant.
We don't have any off-road trail.
But the snowmobile trail does run through the corridor and has changed several times over the years, and it is also a function of how big the beaver dam is.
So perhaps Eversource versus StanTech will just get to say this is what we saw in the field, just get that answer because it relates to some questions later on.
Thanks for the question. That's warm up.
I can tell, there's a lot of that to be added at the end of the table. Did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm going to get it framed quite right, but hopefully you'll be able to telepathically figure it out. How do you make sure that something that's done temporarily, a temporary impact, doesn't become a permanent impact? Inadvertently, practices, I don't know what those things are, but we seem to have them separated into two, and afraid just one melded into the other in some way.
So probably your question would be parsed into what is the difference between them? And permanent means they're putting gravel there and there'll be a stand there forever. Mat, temporary is they put a mat there, but it doesn't count unless it's there over 12 months, according to statutes. So to find out what the actual square footage would be, will be a function of recording and monitoring on the match, each match, how long it's there, and whether they pick it up. Follow me?
I do, that's not quite where I was going. I'm thinking of, and I don't know if this example is relevant, but what comes to my mind is, let's say you put a huge rock somewhere, and that's got nothing to do with this project, but work with me. I think there's people here more experienced. And that rock diverted water in some direction, and that became an issue. Like, I think it gets more practices, or it's more, as opposed to what we know they're going to do. Is there anything that we haven't thought of? Like, an unintended consequence, maybe? Okay.
How will Eversource and StanTech ensure that temporary impact doesn't become permanent impact? And it could be practiced?
You have non-firm questions, Rachel, on the last page. What are the impacts to do like by Eversource? Have they monitored?
Maybe you can supplement that with Kathy Jean's, because it's really a bigger question, and then perhaps it's definitely a management practice. Okay, so I think there was a lot of interesting conversation here at the end of the table.
So question 45, map 46, it doesn't really show what existing fails that, right? It's all easy to imagine. So I'm looking at hole 61 and 60, and 61 and 62, how they span over the wetland. I would take it to 54, but it's a lot harder.
They do show, here it's rated out, there's the 54, and then the number of the 54. So we have. But you're saying. But should we add that to a question? Well, we got the still heights now, Rob's got that. Maybe that can answer. Do you have a?
So are you asking about question, hole 61 and 62?
61 and 60.
Okay.
Senator Hutter, then please. Seven, seven thousand, seven hundred and ten square feet temporary wetland impact and try to track that.
And so with reference to hole 60? I'm hoping to answer a question for you, but I'm not sure what I'm supposed to answer.
I think, I think the specific question I heard from you Troy is, are these poles taller in order to do that?
Yes, they should be. I mean, I have to look at the poles.
Yes, hole 60 goes from 45 feet to 56 feet, which is an 11.4 foot increase. Hole 61 goes from 45 to 56.5, which is 11.5 foot increase. Hole 62 goes from 44.8 feet to 50 feet.
Most of them are 60.
So right in the ballpark. So do you want to add any questions?
No, I'm looking at, I mean, we're looking at impacts.
Other questions?
In the application that they submit to us, so one of the blocks along the discussions that we have, let's get our answers in the application.
Yes. And because we're on this timeline and we, it's good to ask Eversource questions. And I think the bigger picture view here is that, you know, these applications are set up to get public input because they made the project better. And so Eversource may have answered a lot of these in your application. I'm quite sure we're going to ask questions that maybe they haven't thought, or we may ask them, can you change this, or why have you done it this way instead of that way?
So could you put the everball, we're actually looking for land, or are you just going by now?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I can speak to that. If I'm not mistaken, Tom, you're one of the New Hampshire certified wetland experts, and the application mentions that a certified wetland expert prepared and reviewed the wetland status there. Now, we also, the town reviewed the wetland status to prepare the natural resource inventory. And when it becomes appropriate, I'll acquaint you with what Elise Lawson can do for us with that respect.
Margaret, another, and another thing to add to your question, yeah, the meeting we talked about next steps, and one of those is, I think, most likely recommended by the New Hampshire Association of Conservation Commission, that you go out in the field.
Not only that one, but earlier on.
That's right, yes. And I think, and Nancy could.
Well, we, yeah, we went yesterday, and, yeah, we walked from, just past the bridge. And we went in there and walked all the way to town on the right board.
So you came from north to south?
Yeah, well, essentially, yeah. And talk about the wetland. I went in up to my waist in water. There were some other people who were a little more careful than I was, but I, it blew me away, first of all, it's just magnificent. And nobody goes back there. And the thought of these huge machines going in there is just, is devastating.
That's why they're not going to try to do the best they can.
You know, I really think, I mean, if you can possibly get back in some of that area, it's stunning. And the thought of what they're going to do is, we're tragic. I mean, you know, I mean, I understand that they need to do this, sort of, but it's very concerning, and I think it's going to, you know, just destroy a lot.
I'll mention that, just as you walk that stretch from north to south, Elise Lawson and I walked it pretty much from south to north when we were doing the NRI inventory. I sent this around everywhere as a picture of this amazing heron record, where there are eight or nine heron nests that you can see. And if you look carefully, there is power line wires right in the background. So that's, that's definitely, so I guess the question was, does anybody walk and look besides them? And the answer is that you have, and we have, and it's a good idea that we set up a schedule.
Yeah, really encourage as much as people can get in there to look down.
Fantastic. We just did it as a Sunday afternoon walk, I mean, this is not a formal visit. So that is fantastic. And I, you know, not every Conservation Commission member has to be an expert on that one, has to be an expert on these applications, but the more we can be involved in some of these key steps, I think the better input we have. So let's keep it rolling, this is a good conversation, I don't want to shut it down, but any more questions on the maps? Because these are dense. Any additional questions you have, anything you can ask?
No. Just looking, yeah.
Anybody else, you know, here, members of the public? See, you know this landscape really well.
He's not sure.
Yeah, I know, they're hard to read.
But I'm inclined to agree with Nancy, but, I mean, first of all, the boundary originally, so it's kind of, so much, and now it's sold, and now they're going to go back, and I understand the techniques are pretty great, but it's still, it's still hard to think about. I wonder how they determine if the poles are usually replaced? What's that missing? I wonder how they determine if the poles need to be replaced?
Backfilling the field.
Say that, Troy?
They failed, their structure failed.
Cracked.
Cracked, decayed. The base is 1948. I know, there's probably a thing also in there. It's a sale, but it's not, it's just the nature of the beast.
Also, under.
Is there a question you could add? I mean, I'm guessing if there's been an assessment of these poles.
We have said what the wood direction lines would do to the hill.
They flew drones over them to look at the tops and see if they're alive. One of the things that.
Before, I just want to make sure that we're finished with Lucy's observation and question. It sounds like the information is there and we can get it, you know, it's just, it's a good question to ask, how do they know, are all of them really failed? And so do we want to add anything, or do you think we've already got some information that we don't need to ask? Kate has a question.
I do have a question, Tom. So we actually have lots of questions, but it's only one, Kate, not four. And some of it is relevant, I made these up before I got here, so the questions I have related to this issue of the line being built in 1948 and replacing poles that are 70 years old. But, for instance, I happen to have an opportunity to be out there recently, and pole number 81, and I will map it on, but pole number 81 has an inspection tag from 2002 on it, which is a little metal.
39, M39.
Come out 39. So this was way in the weeds, but it's relevant to the bigger questions.
40.
40. Not number 40?
And so you're referencing a pole number?
So, for instance, pole number 81, which I know is on map number 40, had a little old old metal inspection hangers they whack in when they go by, it says 2002. It looked very sound to me, except, do people know what a brontosaurus is? Not a dinosaur, but a machine.
The one that flips off trees.
Yeah, so a lot of times, I don't know if they do this here, but in many places I'm familiar with, there's this big machine with the rotating head, they cut the brush, and a lot of stuff goes flying, and the poles get beat up by the debris flying from the process of clearing vegetation at the height. So that pole looked like it had a lot of stuff that had been blown against it, kind of like hurricane came through. But it looked really sound with its inspection tag from 2002. However, and this is what Troy was talking about, it had little stubs next to the pole that looked to me like those poles have been replaced since 1948. And so if people are following me, my bigger question is, are all the wooden poles along the whole right of way 70 years old? Or has there been interim maintenance? So we've got a mix of poles that are older and newer. And to me, it's just a question that backs up to the biggest question, which is, is it technically possible to make wooden and weather steel poles so that you don't have to replace the whole chiseled match if you have newer poles that are still sound? And that's just, I can hand these questions in, and I have copies of people who want to read them, I was thinking, but that was one of the series of questions, was about just a dumb question, are all the poles 70 years old at some point?
And you're going to give us a copy of that?
I can do it right now.
Well, I want to make sure if you have other questions, you can leave that, but it sounds like Rob.
Quick answer, the other thing with the subject, for the code, for where they shrink the lines now, these poles do have to come up in height, all the poles. So they couldn't use the existing poles that are there. When they're janking this line, it's important to the code they have come up. And that's, their code, whatever their code is, that was explained to me when they were up, five, four. And I think John, I even, John wants to get to that.
Yeah, I'm still with Rob and Amy, I don't know if that's okay.
One thing to consider is that, Kate, possibly the reason you saw a stub there was, believe it or not, from time to time, these poles do break or get knocked down by wind events. And I would, if I saw a pole with a stub and a more modern structure there, I would think it was possible that that pole had been broken at some point and had to be replaced. There are another couple of things to think about. One is, if this is not only a problem of aging poles, there's a change in technology proposed through. The line that will go back will be different in that it's what's called OPGW, which means there's an optical fiber cable in it. And the purpose of that is it allows substation to substation communication more efficiently. In other words, if the line, the power goes off and there's a break in the line, this technology allows a more rapid and efficient identification of where the problem is. Of course, the bad news is that when you take a three scan strand cable and add a fourth heavy fiberglass strand through it, it becomes heavier and it has different tensile strength response. So I am suspecting that one of the problems with mixing wooden and steel structures would be that the wooden structures may no longer be structurally sufficient to carry the new cable that's going to be there.
Yeah, Rob, that could be, but I'd be interested if Eversource could use that for us. That may well be, but I'd be interested to hear Eversource's answer.
Yes, that's where I got it, but you should hear a little less.
So I agree, I agree with Kate. Eversource needs to answer this, but I could lengthen my perspective, this from my four years experience working in the utility industry. First off, if I were to propose that we stop calling this an upgrade, because it's not an upgrade, the only upgrade is that the communication cable that is being used to communicate from substation to substation. The utility line, the transmission line, is not the necessary connection to that. However, because they're putting fiber optic now and putting in the transmission line itself along with the conductors, there's greater weight than what these poles can handle, or so. Secondly, now, relative to your inspection tag, I don't know about Eversource's, all the gas and electric, have requirement to inspect every one of its poles, distribution or and transmission, wooden poles, every 10 years. We hired a contractor to do that. That inspection is not a visual inspection. It was a visual inspection, plus they pour a hole into the pole so that they can verify that the inside structure is as strong as the outside structure looks to be. Then they also put what they call mitsupium, which is an insect, insecticide. Then they also put what they call mitsupium, which is an insecticide, into the pole to prevent ground insects from deteriorating the pole. And then, as a structural improvement, they may sister a pole with a re-pole. So you may see a stub pole, what looks like a stub pole, right next to another pole, and it's really sistered up there, divided sufficiently.
This wasn't assisted, this was separated by about three feet.
Okay. Down, down this way, that's probably placed.
So, what can happen this way underground, like in weather, especially with poles?
They can determine, they can determine. The folks who do it typically are contracted by Osmos. They've been doing it for probably 16 years or so, as long as they're going on. And so they understand everything associated with the structure of the poles specifically. But now, of course, they're changing poles on being pre-sistered, treated poles to what we call pressure-governing poles, which is yet another problem, because they're not as flexible as a pre-surgery pole. If you don't want to keep going, it's a bad example.
I can give you a thought more. Not tonight, but I just want to check into top seven, third, eight, the seven numbers that we wanted to walk through, get the conservation commissions input, get public input, taking that over to this, to your side.
It's not that long, and I, I think I'll just follow with Johnson.
Okay.
Yes. So, to your, it's John, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, Kate, that's the reason at the bottom, under background, my questions, I asked question number two, which is provide reports of routine inspections and engineering analysis. Now, I just got this stuff from reading the article in the newspaper, and they talked about their process, so I just wanted to follow up with what they were saying, and ask, can we get the report? So that's my question number two.
I think it's a good question, and I'd be surprised if they can't provide this too.
We're all going to learn more than one.
No doubt.
Maybe not you, but me.
You may learn more than you want, but not more than you should.
I like that, and, you know, we may never be able to speak again, but we can be smarter about what, smarter about what, so that's great. So, I'm going to move on, I think, to potential, oh, so, there's a section of the document at the bottom of page two, but they're not questioned so much as things we might ask them for. And so, the commissions have a chance to look at that, including some of the other applications that they have applied for.
What are you talking about, like, 25 questions?
No, now I'm on, I started remembering again, because it's not questioned so much as potential requests or that commission. So, bottom of page two, there's three questions, and then I continue down the next page, another non-question. Things we could ask them for, more stuff to review. Some of it is stuff to review, some of it pertains more to once construction gets going, can we be in ongoing conversation?
Sure. Question number eight.
One of our, one of our A T V, it's impossible to, I mean, around my workplace, looking at that, it's surrounded by water, and you look at that, it's going to hold, get into the ditch. It is, well, it's a great interest.
Right, but how do we keep the ATVs? I mean, when we were out there, clearly, they'd been around.
The place you left them, you were out there.
Well, there's legal ATVs and there's illegal ATVs.
There's really no trail.
As Troy's saying, the ATV group in town is very interested in having a trail system, but they have pretty much, even the hardcore ones, determined that Lancaster is water rock, and there's no good or easy place to play ATVs.
I know, where this question came from was not so much, will there be an ATV trail along the corridor, but that there can be random ATV, tends to be more local, I think, random ATV activity where somebody says, oh, that's improved, I'm going to go up there into the power line, and since it's easement on private property, it's all up to the landowner to manage that. So I think this question is, you know, can they put up gates if they improve the road so that, it's not even, it shouldn't even say ATVs, it should actually really say unauthorized access, because, and maybe be less of a red flag.
Yeah, and what measures will ever source take?
What is their policy? First, the lesson, put a trail on the ground, what is their policy?
See, they have a right of way, but they...
Private land.
Yeah.
Private, private, you're right.
It's easement.
Right, easement, easement for power lines now, for ATVs, so it's a specific thing.
So, in other words, they have no...
Do we have each, each of the private property owners along that easement to...
To allow that.
So they would have to say, lower...
It's just, it's just like the snow machine trails, where people, people, property owners allow snow machines in the wintertime. That doesn't mean any off-road recreation vehicle twelve months out of the year is going to be possible.
So, can you change that to unauthorized access? And it's not so much that ever source can get permission, they can't, but they, if they do improve the road and it's a little more inviting per, they could potentially put a gate test.
I think Ben would be the first to tell you that the select board meeting, these questions often come up, and the town has pretty much, has tried to help promote ATVs to the extent that it's practical, given them permission to use some roads on the condition that they would build their own trails and get their own permits, and they didn't, so now they can. So the good news is that the town takes this seriously and isn't very interested in it. And so I guess since it's a power line rider plan, the town might have an effect on ATV use there, as would landowners, but that wouldn't be something that ever source would be addressing or involved.
Heard through this conversation, I've crossed it out and said unauthorized access.
So you, question three?
Yeah.
Ask ever source to overlay the E142 line?
Yes.
On the map? It is overlapped, overlaying already on map number one. I'm pretty sure that you can see it running, it's called, it's colored like an open space or a permanent open.
Yes.
It's not actually listed as the power line, but on that map, you can see the E142.
This is what that is specifically about. We have the town of Lancaster, the wonderful natural resources inventory.
That's on the map, too.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. I think you really spearheaded this, and we know it. The Tom, so the law of resources and conservation laws, could they overlay their line right on this one, so we could see?
Yes, and I'm sure it can be done, and this might be a segue into, I'll talk more about this, but Elise Lawson and John Severance have done all of the studies in the region for wetlands, et cetera, et cetera. I've contacted her to find out what it would cost to have her do a couple of things that we could use, our independent experts, by the way, and she could very easily do that for us.
Let's pick that up on next steps.
Later.
But it's, the fundamental question here, I don't know if you asked, yes, so Kathy Jean, you actually had a question on that, right?
Oh.
That was Rob. So is that, that's, we've that in the...
Yeah, table like that for now.
What I'm saying is, is it already is overlaying on map number one, it just doesn't have a little writing, and says this is the power line.
This is, what number of question is this?
Question three.
Number three on page two. Oh, thank you. All right, all right. So, this is, can they overlay the natural resources inventory wetland now?
I'm sure they can.
Yeah, I'm sure they can too, but, yeah, probably any number of people could. The question, do we want to ever source to do that, use somebody else? Kathy Jean?
Question nine, how will invasives be identified and managed? Have they already been identified?
Question nine.
Just retooling that question? Have they? Yeah? Or, like, are they there? Is there anything now?
Yes, there's in 2006 functional wetlands inventory, which is a special invasion. And 2020, I'm not sure whether this is specifically mentioned in here, but I can tell you that that is very much, I mean, Lawson's line, modern, maybe a table of invasion.
I think Kathy Jean can ask, have they been identified, ever source? Can you tell me about what they do in their proposal, and what they mentioned in that?
Yes.
That information of the decision point out, Rob?
Page 43, natural resources inventory, invasive lands.
No, they consulted that.
Now, Tom tells me that, Tom, I'm talking about you here, that he went to the Conservation Commission webpage, and he looked at our natural resource inventory, and I'm not sure, you know, he only had 700 pages to generate, so I'm not sure how much time he had to devote to that. But I know that he has told us that he made an attempt to see what local regulations were here, and he also looked at the natural resource inventory. Am I misquoting you, Tom?
No, that's, that's correct, and yes, part of my attempt was to figure out if there's any sort of actual permits from the town of Lancaster that are needed for this project, aside from a review from the Conservation, which is not an actual permit, but, you know, a local permitting, such as a building permit or something of that nature.
Kathy Jean, is there more on that question of invasives that you want to make sure?
I think it's fine. It's fine.
Okay. I can, so we're going to, we're going to move this along. This is a good conversation, but we're, you know, we've got, really, just a few more questions to make sure people are comfortable with, add to. So, under state and regional, there's a few. Are you comfortable though, if you want to add anything? And then, under non-permit questions, this is really not related to Conservation Commission, not related to weapons per se, but they, these were important questions for some members of the public at our last meeting, and I didn't want to be the one to throw them up, but honestly, I thought they, they're, they're good to include if we can get answers to them, so...
Ben may have more information on that than I do, but I know with respect to timber harvesting, D E S actually promulgates, there's a document called Best Management Practices for Timber Harvesting, and I think they're probably, I wouldn't be surprised, although I can confirm that D E S has definitely, and usually the permit applications require affirmative to utilize best management practices, nice to find by the state. Now, how loose or how tight they are, I don't know, but...
Correct, so, all these questions and the non-permit questions have been submitted, and they have response. I know, you have a copy of it, and I know that they, we actually called, first, submitted all the questions, first, the first involved person that gave those initial two pages of questions, and these were empty. And I'll get a copy when we have it, and I know we have seven minutes of bed on, for today, definitely, but they were...
Can you talk about the ones coming?
Linda wants to, actually, she contacted.
She was. So that's what you're talking about?
Yeah, that's the question I submitted the next day to Evan, to Evan. So, you have Nancy on, if they'll build it, it was, by next week.
That would be great, yeah. I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's good information for us to have as a commission.
And it's easy that you have any question, what, from, from, from...
I do wonder about number one and number two. Two people covered by, I think, these questions, the question about best management practices and the ongoing maintenance, as you think. And I will say, I think there's, there's the weapons permitting process, the weapons application, and then there's the ongoing work over the next few years that this commission is really needs to make a sharp line, so that's where these two would come in.
I don't have the question, I don't have the question, I, but they were also going to...
Okay.
Maybe it was somebody that you or Lucy contacted mentioned that there's no harm in going out and making sure that these people are monitored, because it wouldn't be unusual for ever source to stop, contract, to another outfit, and we would hope that they would somehow be persuaded to follow best practice.
Yeah, I'm not sure where these actually go in this, but it's random. Can we, in some way, help encourage them to do this wetland work in the wintertime? I mean, even now, though, it is, we're in a quote drought, it's very wet in the wetlands, and they would just chew it up. So, if we could hold their foot to the fire as far as doing that work in the wintertime, I think it would be worthwhile.
Well, if it provided us with a timeline.
Not, I don't think we might get to that now. Yeah, we're going to generate the questions. That's great, we can, and the other one that I'm interested in is the few void outings. That's going to be... So, that is a, this question number three about cultural landscape. And maybe a lot, I'm not a columnist, but I'll set something for the Conservation Commission.
It is, but I can, we're in back. Yeah, the tree line was...
But we can look at it.
We can look at it.
Yeah. Yes, I know.
And we also have a general rule of Conservation Commission, that generally ask and encourage to coordinate amongst other groups, the planning commissions and stuff, so, but anything we can do to help facilitate that, I think is actually in our definition of what we're supposed to do, coordinate among the...
Yes, by, I'm going to ignore that, because we don't have to take it on as...
No, I know, I don't want to make you...
Page four. These are the things that we could ask for. Should we ask for them? In addition to the 700 page documents coming in, we can ask to look at these. Doesn't mean everyone on the commission is going to have to review them, but, you know, we don't want to ask them if we're not going to look at them.
Perhaps, would this be good, to be the comment, that I've heard from Elise Lawson?
I would really prefer that we put that in next steps, because...
Because it addresses this issue.
No, no, so, I think, I, I think that does make sense, because I looked at it, and she's proposing that she would review those for us. As long as we can not have, we hear what her proposal is, but then vote on it on May 10, would be my proposal, so that we can just secretly post the agenda on it.
So, are you saying, don't talk about it now, Rob?
No.
Or are you saying...
No, I, so, I, so, page four is a list of documents that we could request from ever source. They will need to be reviewed, I mean, we're going to ask for them, we should look at them. They're technical, they're complicated. I think what Rob's going to say, that's something we could ask Elise Lawson to do for a normal fee.
Well, and actually, some of them aren't very technical, they just aren't something that we usually look at.
But we can pay someone, yeah. We have the funds available to do that.
Yes.
And there's a necessity of information that's to review.
Those are the right questions to ask.
Yes, and so...
What do you think? I mean, I, I mean.
I'm ready to speak when you're ready.
Well, how can I hear it? Get them to review them? Yeah, that's, I mean, that's what I'm, and I don't know how much people we can hear about it, but we would look at that proposal and then vote on May ten?
We could wait till we get our questions back, too. The questions you're gonna submit, on the way you get that back, who would make the ones that, they may submit a lot of our answers, but the question.
So what Troy is saying is, before we take that step, maybe wait and get answers to these questions.
Yes.
I mean, let's have a discussion about that, it's a.
Well, I'd like to present a general outline. There are basically four or five things we can do here. We can do nothing, and then D E S will say, okay, no, I don't know what from that, and then they'll do what they want. Or we can do a little bit, ask a few questions, get some answers, and then write narrative before what we recommend. Or we can do a lot, we can walk the lines ourselves, we can delve into this and become experts, local experts. And then the fifth thing is that we can hire somebody to support this for us. When I think about it, I think about, can we afford it? And do we have the manpower and the willingness on this group to actually do all the walking and doing all the work? And do we have time to do all of this stuff ourselves within forty days? Do we have time to reinvent the wheel? Or do we, the alternatives are Elise, I said Elise, she did the functional wetland study for Northern Pass, going through Northumberland, who was one of our partners. She's about to do the study for white people, and she's just done it for us, so I said, what can you do and what would it cost? And I know everyone's looked at that, but she says, I can go anywhere, I'm just reading what you got and writing my opinion, or I can read what you got, write my opinion, and write a letter on your behalf to D E S, a supporting documentation, or I can actually come up with a fourteen or fifteen page functional wetland study like Northumberland Commission. And the advantage of having her do that is, just as Tom Tetra was a certified wetland specialist, she is a certified wetland specialist. I'm not saying we have to use her, we could use anyone, if we decided we wanted our own expert, that would be a way to get that. The advantage of using Elise, and we, this was a good thing when we did her natural resources inventory, was she had already done so much of the work in this territory before, she was a lot less attentive to use her, because she was able to synthesize materials she already had and save us money. And she can meet the forty day time thing, and apparently, if you're giving her to have longer on that, but she can do that. And she is willing to do the field work and walk, but she says she said that doesn't always hurt.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, just, because I'm reading the body language in the room, and I think people are interested in saying, we're done with this document, you know, I'll put these revisions together and bring it back to the May ten meeting, but I think what you're saying is, you would like the commission, so.
No, I'm sorry, I'm saying that the commission hasn't necessarily committed to what path it wants to take. I would like to do the most complete and complex thing, but my experience in having people walk our season as they are, is that people have lives, they don't have time, and one way to have sort of our own wetland scientist to compare with the other one, is to use someone like Elise, and the other thing is that Elise can do a lot of the work.
Yes.
In cooperation with us.
And I am reading the body language. And I'm gonna say, so I, I'm seeing it's great that we presented that, I'm looking to the commission now, do you want to take that at this meeting?
No, I don't think this is the time.
But we can take it up at a future meeting. And there's, and the point that I, I understand what you're saying, which is, if we ask for these documents, we may well have somebody we can contract with, Ramona Spie, who could look through them quickly and.
She could probably weigh through seven hundred pages quicker than you, so.
So I, I mean, I, you know, I'm glad you presented it, I think we're gonna talk about it, and it would be one of our next steps, so.
There is one other question that was asked by Margaret, which is, can we afford it? And the answer is, we can. We have about twenty-five hundred or three thousand dollars in local power education. In the past, that's been used to give scholarships to scholars, it's been used to send people to camps, but part of what we used it for was to actually disseminate and promote the N R I, so education can be educating citizens, and so I'm hoping that what we come out with at the end is not only something that we send to D E S, but something that everyone can look at and appreciate.
So whether to do it and, and the budget for it.
The answer is, I can tell, I can figure out how to lift the money up to two thousand dollars, I have the question.
So, but the decision of why, we'll be there.
Well, that's a motion, that's a motion.
He's wanting to move on, and that's always a bad sign, if somebody is telling a facilitator, you're not gonna walk past him, so I think the government, this portion of these, we do. So I'm gonna do one more thing here, which is, so that we're all kind of engaged about where we're going, and this is aspirational suggestions, very high level, but tonight was our first opportunity to talk about this, we have a good document. We already talked about that, it's a, some next step, Rob, you had said, I think just need to make sure we got a ton of work, and so this document's gonna get updated, I couldn't update the board, the Select Board about this, just to keep them in a loop, as you said, right on forward.
Well, Troy is our man, and that's his role.
Great, and so, we can review and approve this document at our next meeting, arrange for a site walk, and incorporate all that information into our comments, we have May twenty-second deadline, and, you know, we can ask for an extension, we don't have to decide now, we can decide in a few weeks, and we know how.
I think we should plan, I've been planning on May twenty-second, which being our deadline, that being forty days from the day we got the document, but now that I understand that there hasn't actually been a submission of the permit application, if that's true, then our forty days wouldn't even start until next time.
But for the purposes of planning, no one.
Right, let's plan on forty days, because if we get it done sooner, no penalty.
You think we're done? Members of the public, why?
Well done.
You know, thank you for staying and, you know, listening, we should wrap the all down, topics on the table.
Guiding the needle.
Do we, do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion, do I?
Oh, we have nine.
Questions and answers. I would suggest that before you all leave, we have some discussion about that, because to pull the trigger now, if there's that individual, more time to do a thorough job for you, than if you wait until the tenth of May, and I understand, May twenty-second is not the firm deadline, but still, there's between now and tenth of May, what, fourteen days, basically two weeks, but. And I will say that I've had that discussion with her, can you do it in the timeframe that she has set, indicated that she thinks she can? And of course, if we choose the two hundred and fifty dollar letter option, that's three hours of work from her, and if we want more done, then we not only have to coordinate with her, but we need to coordinate.
So we had a suggestion from a member of the public, it's really up to the Conservation Commission, and I don't, you know, we have to, I don't know, this is a parliamentary procedure, would you, if anybody wanted to make a motion to discuss this tonight, or to discuss it at the May ten, because I think, as facilitator, I'm not, I'm suggesting we don't, but I'll leave it to all of you, I think.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
So Kathy Jean, I know we can't hear, like, a motion to wait.
Okay, the motions to wait?
The motion on the floor is, will we not discuss and decide this now, but defer to the May twelve meeting? Do I have that correctly?
I'm second, yeah, that's what I heard, too.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, roll call. That's Nancy Southworth, aye.
Aye.
Troy Murner, aye.
Parker Ross, aye.
Harvey Hobbs, aye. Rod Christie, aye.
Eric Livingstone, aye.
Kathy Jean Lavoie, aye.
Rachel.
Motion there.
All right, back to you, Rob.
Well, again, I think we've talked about the timeline that we're facing here, and I think it may be longer than we think it is, I think that we, as Rachel pointed out, statutorily, we have forty days from some date, and we can ask for an extension to another thirty days, if there is a good reason, and I think we all agree that we want to make this as expeditious and efficient for ourselves and for Eversource. And we're not here to hold things up, we're here to make sure that we protect the interest of all of us. That would be my summary, and as John has pointed out, we are on a timeline, so let's make sure that, I guess, we've decided that we're not gonna vote on hiring Elise for an expert, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
But if we wait until the twelfth, then as John points out, she's got ten days to act.
I meant, I was turning it over to you during the meeting. I was turning it back to you during the meeting.
Well, and I, but as chairman, I'm taking the prerogative to continue this and say that we do have a timeline, we do have a schedule, we have to meet it, and.
We, Eversource, they got, I think, Kathy, we're looking for the first week we made it at Eversource before our meeting, you know, you should get a lot of answers, and they are offering to come up and be watching groups, so we can work with the official before our May ten meeting. We're gonna, I think we're gonna get a lot of our answers ahead of time, so.
Well, all right, from standing, I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page.
If it's back, is it back to me, or do you like to continue?
Yeah, because I think we don't have a clear understanding about what the timeline is, so what this is for, we will review the changes to this document at the May ten meeting, so then we would send it to them, and so they could certainly, we could certainly schedule the site walk for them, but.
Okay, and I will, I will comment that we all have lives, and, you know, we might not all be able to just drop everything and go on site walks and stuff, so I think it's important that we maintain the prerogative of scheduling it so that we can get it done. I'm uncomfortable with Eversource driving the process, we think we're in charge, and we will do everything we can to facilitate it, but at the same time, if Eversource, they already called me up, and they asked if we could meet on Thursday, and I said no, because I couldn't make that decision without the commission, so.
But Eversource will be there.
This was Lori Summer, this was Lori Summer at D E S asking me if we could meet with Eversource and her and the commission Thursday or Friday of this week, and I felt like at the time, I couldn't answer that question, because I didn't think, I didn't know whether we'd be far enough to go, and I think that's too soon, because we won't even have a chance to submit our questions and get answers before that.
Yes.
Now, she is talking about mitigation funds, and that's different than what we're talking about here, so.
So thank you, we can make a free address for now, and I, I think.
I have that, I have that, I was trying to, I was trying to save it, and I, I bet somebody asked us to.
I think we can.
During the second, let's do roll call.
Nancy Southworth, second.
Yeah.
Troy, yes. Rod Christie, yes.
Kathy Jean Lavoie, yes.
Lady, is it here? And by the way.
Thank you, everybody.
That's a little bit formal, this roll call, but it's the rules if we're not being recorded. Did we have any visitors from outside?